The Plainville Board of Education. Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
And four new Board of Education members. But tonight is also a night to celebrate an outgoing Board of Education member, Ms. Cheryl Provost. She was on the Board for nine years, eight-plus years. And when I thought of Cheryl, as I was planning to say a few words tonight, the first thing that came to mind was passionate. Because of anything that we discussed or undertook, she became very passionate and was a real passionate advocate for children. And she was a true supporter of education. So, while I appreciate she wants to have a little break, we're gonna really, really miss her. And I hope she stays in touch with us. But I just want to thank her sincerely for eight-plus years of dedicated and passionate service to the children of Plainville. And I didn't know... We actually have a little award for you. For outstanding service and appreciation. Would you like to say a few words? Some of your board members made some words. Okay. I won't cry. I won't cry. Thank you for the kind words. Thank you, Joan, for organizing this and for keeping me organized for the last eight-plus years. I was always where I was supposed to be because you told me where that was. It's been a privilege to serve with the administrators, the teachers, the staff, the students of Plainville, and my board colleagues. I think we, however we came to things, we had our eye on the ball and we had our end goal. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my personal mentor, Becky Tyrell, who from the beginning helped me learn how to be a good Board Member and how to interact. She taught me, in terms of who's on the top of our group, our administrators, that it matters who's driving the bus. So, over the past few years, as we've been able to fill the bus driver's seat in the front from the back and use people from inside to come up and continue and be in Plainville, it's been great to be part of that. It's great to be part of the technology and everything we've done. I will miss that. I'll leave being a mom and saying, you know, here's what I leave you with is, when times get tough for education, that's the time that everybody has to really keep their eye on the ball, keep that going forward. Things could get tough here, but I know that your hearts are all in it for the kids and that you'll continue that way. I'll miss you. And thank you for everything. It's been great working with you.
Dr. Berman actually said a lot of things I was gonna say about Cheryl because I think she's extremely passionate about kids and I've always loved that about her. We're gonna miss her. She always organizes our Memorial Day parade and gets our flags and makes sure we're ready for that. She does dodgeball, so we're gonna have to find people to fill in for that. I'm really gonna miss her. We've been serving for almost the same amount of years and Cheryl and I, you know, there's just something about her that we just clicked and I'm really, really gonna miss her, so I'm gonna try not to cry about that. But I have to tell you one thing, though, before we let the other Board Members speak is I was talking to her husband. I went over and I said, "Rob, we're really gonna miss Cheryl." He said, "I'm here to make sure this happens." So, we're very happy to give your wife back and you guys can travel and do all the other things you want to do. So, thank you for sharing her with us for eight years.
If anybody else wants to say something, please speak up.
Yeah, I would just briefly like to say that I really want to personally thank Cheryl for all of her dedicated years of service, not only on the Board of Education, but all the other things she has done for this town. She has just done exemplary service to this community. And I want to personally also thank her for being my mentor as I came onto the Board not that long ago. And really, she just kind of was very supportive and very informative and just very positive in her, the way she just could lead you through somewhat contentious process sometimes and tried in every effort she made to make it less contentious as possible. So, thank you so much, Cheryl, for being a good friend and a good neighbor.
I'll also just say a couple of words, Cheryl. You know, I'm gonna miss you a lot because Cheryl has a way of making bad situations seem okay. Just, you know, kind of keeps very even keel. She is, as everybody mentioned, a very passionate supporter of education, a passionate supporter of the arts. And, you know, along her and Foster together, actually, we're like a one-two punch on that. So thankfully, we still have Foster. But I also know that Cheryl really didn't want to run four years ago. And her arm was broken in a sling when she decided to do that. So, I appreciate, I know, you know, the sacrifice that you gave and really appreciate your time and everything that you have given to the school system and the students here. Thanks.
And I just want to say that I really always respected your dedication, integrity, and most of all, your sense of humor. There's just times I could look at you, I'd look across the room, and it's just that little smile you had. You always are on a very positive note with things, very passionate but very positive, always moving forward, always thinking about the best for the children. So, I really, really appreciate that and we're gonna miss you.
Cheryl, I too will miss you. And I enjoyed being on the Board with you for the amount of time that we have been. But I know where you live and I know that you will always need candy.
I'm gonna miss you too. I've got a new person to get used to, but...
She's great.
This is good to know. Anyway, it was good getting to know you and serving with you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you too. I mean, the past two years, you've helped me, you know, get adjusted to being on the Board. Thank you. I'll miss you.
I do.
And I owe you the biggest thank you of all for giving me that telephone call in July.
All right. Well, also thanks to Rob for sharing her with us for a long time. And... (laughter). Yes, it's official, Rob. It's official. So, to honor Cheryl and her years of service as well as our brand-new Board Member Kathleen Wells and our newly re-elected Board Members Andrea Saunders, Becky Tyrell, and Nicole Palmeri, we'd like to join us for a brief reception right over here. And then we'll commence our Board Meeting in about five minutes. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to congratulate all our newly elected or re-elected Board Members. Ms. Kathy Wells, Ms. Nicole Palmeri, Ms. Andrea Saunders, and who am I forgetting? Oh, Ms. Becky Tyrell. I would now like to open up nominations for Chairperson of the Board of Education.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Andrea Saunders as a Chairwoman of the Board of Education.
Do I hear a second?
Second. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Very good. The newly elected Chairperson of the Board of Education is Andrea Saunders. Oh, the whole, excuse me. Now, the whole Board has to vote on that. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent. We have a new Board Chair. And now she gets the gavel back.
Oh, thanks, Dr. Berman. You don't want to pass it this way. Give it to me.
She's got her gavel back. She's lost without her gavel.
Thanks, everyone. I do also want to congratulate Becky, Nicole, and welcome Kathleen Wells. It's very nice to have you and you're in a great chair, so...
Thank you.
All right. So, next we're going to just open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Deb Hardy for Vice Chair. Second?
Okay. I have a first and a second. Are there any other nominations? All right. We'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're gonna move right on to the Everyday Hero Presentations. Dr. Berman?
Excellent. I would like to announce the Everyday Hero for this Board Meeting is Mark Alfano. And he was nominated by Suzanne Bayjack, who's here with us tonight. Here's what Suzanne wrote about Mark Alfano. "For years, Mark comes to the rescue on computer issues. He shows me, reexplains, and then shows me a third time if needed until I get it right. He is the master of performance tracker. He made it possible for our scholars to access my on quickly this year. He has fixed countless glitches with our report cards. When our new students enter, he's always willing to help me add them to my roster in any program. When I call, he takes my phone calls every time. Mark probably doesn't know how much he is appreciated by all the Linden teachers, but he really is." Come on up, Everyday Hero, Mark Alfano.
Congratulations.
I just want to tell you this little story. When I said I nominated Mark, the young teachers at my building were like, "He's real?" When we dialed 245, like, he answers, but you've seen him? I'm like, "Yeah, what do you mean?" They're like, "He's a real guy behind there?" So, honestly, we need to get him out more, Kevin, because the new teachers at my building, probably all over the district, have no idea what he looks like. So, we need to put the picture big on the website because they think I'm nuts. They have no idea he's a real man. So, it's some screen name. It was hysterical. They're like, "Who is he?"
Exactly. This is gonna get tweeted out.
Or he's one of, like, ten people or something.
Is there a real attorney in Southern, that sold his condo?
Okay, next, we're gonna, we have a few sets of minutes we need approvals for. Can I get a motion for a?
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the October 10th regular business meeting of the Board of Education.
A second.
I have a first and a second. Any additions or corrections? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next?
Motion for request approval of minutes of the Board's special meeting of October 11th, 2017 Finance Subcommittee.
Correction, that should be the Facilities Subcommittee.
Okay. Thanks, Foster.
I would second that as a minute.
All right. So, we have a first and a second. Any discussion or additional corrections? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next?
Motion for request approval of minutes of the Board's special meeting of October 11th, 2017 Policy Subcommittee.
Correction, that should be the Facilities Subcommittee.
Okay. Thanks, Foster.
I would second that as a minute.
All right. So, we have a first and a second. Any discussion or additional corrections? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Lastly?
Motion to request approval of minutes of the Board's special meeting of October 26th, 2017 Policy Subcommittee.
All right. I have a first and a second. Any additions or corrections? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, we have the citizens' portions, the citizens' comments. If you wish to speak to the Board of Education, you can step up to the podium, state your name and address. Go right up.
I'm Bob Hilburn. I live on Bohemia Street. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I'd like to thank the Board and the Policy Committee for looking at revising one of the regulations that's being discussed. I think it's Regulation 1142. And I just want to talk about the language of the proposed changes regarding the regulation. In the language currently in the policy as it's written, as far as reaching out to parents when a student is going to be interviewed by the authorities, the current language states that the school will reach out to the authorities and it's up to them to call the parents. What I was looking for is for us to hopefully put more of the burden back on the school to reach out to the parents in those situations where the authorities were gonna be called in to talk to the kids at the school, not in an emergency situation. And the proposed language, whatever it turns out to be, I just ask that it passes kind of a couple of tests. One, obviously giving a reasonable amount of time for the parents to respond to a request to allow our children to be interviewed in the school. And secondly, that when the parents respond, do the parents, one, have the opportunity to be present, obviously give permission, if they can't be present, to have the authorities speak to our kids in the school. And then, third, if for some reason the parents feel it's not a good idea for them to have the opportunity to say no. And obviously, worst-case scenario, I understand where that might not be the case, if there's imminent threats or dangers, just the preliminary language as far as what it looks like it might be changed to, it does seem to address those concerns. I just ask when you go to vote on that or make the permanent change that it passes, in your mind, those three things, that yes, the parents will be contacted, they have a reasonable amount of time to respond, and they have the opportunity either to be present or say, "I don't need to be present, that's okay," or again, for whatever reason, have the opportunity to say, "Yeah, you know, I don't think that's a good idea and I don't want my child to be questioned." Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hilburn. Anyone else wishing to address the Board of Education? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Our council liaison is not here this evening. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Berman?
Thank you. I would now like to ask Mr. Chris Farrell to come to the podium, our Athletic Director. He is going to discuss his recommendations for the revision of Board Regulation 5136, which talks about academic eligibility for extracurricular and co-curricular activities. As the Board's aware, the Board Policy Subcommittee does not officially review regulations, but we would like the Board to be fully informed about the recommended changes. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Dr. Berman, and congratulations to Kathy Wells and everyone else that got re-elected on the Board of Education. Last year, when I was named the Athletic Director, Principal Medick actually tasked me into looking into the academic policy because we had a lot of teachers. When he took over, they stated that they, you know, weren't very happy with some of the loopholes the students had found in our academic policy. So, from there, I went and had 12 members, I got 12 members that consisted of club advisors, coaches in the system, teachers at the high school, and also instructional leaders with one school counselor and both of our assistant principals on the committee. They were then tasked to go out and research schools in the area, in the state, bring their policy back to the table so we could all sit around and discuss pros and cons of our policy, compare them to other schools. We also really looked in-depth at the CIAC regulations, the Connecticut Interscholastic Association, and what they regulate our student athletes in the state of Connecticut to have. The consensus came that we needed to make a change. Everyone felt very strongly that we wanted to hold the students here at Plainville High School to higher standard, as we have always done in the past, but we wanted to kind of make some tweaks to it, to the former policy, just due to the fact that the loopholes that were kind of being, happening by the students. So, in the old policy, if you received one F, you would go on a weekly checklist. What started happening is at the end of quarter, students within, you know, noticed if they had two Fs towards the end of a quarter, they would focus on the grade that was a little bit higher and they'd forget about the grade that, you know, it might have been like a 40 and said, "Hey, I'm just gonna leave it because I'll still be eligible to participate with one F." So, we made the tweak where we changed it and made academically eligible, if you passed all five, or all your classes, you were eligible. If you have one F and a 70 average of all your classes combined, you are eligible. So, if you're below a 70 average, we would then put you on probation. The students in the school, you know, it just holds them to a higher standard. You know, we think that that's very important academically here at Plainville High School for that to happen. The teachers felt strongly because now the student can't sit there and say, "Well, I'm not gonna worry about that class because it won't matter." They have to worry about all of their classes because if they don't have a 70 average and they have a failing grade, because that tends to happen sometimes that they might have, you know, made, got a bad grade on a test or a report, that they still have an opportunity. The teachers also felt strongly and the committee members that moving to, so we have three areas, academic eligibility, I'm sorry, academically eligible, eligible with academic probation, and then academically ineligible. And the change with eligible with academic probation allows a student that receives two Fs on a quarter report card to still participate, whether they're trying out, practicing, but they're not allowed to play in any athletic contests or activities after school. This allows motivation. A lot of the coaches felt very strongly and the teachers felt very strongly. It actually helps the students stay on task. We're also having the coaches intervene more. I feel very, you know, strongly on that, that the coaches need to have, you know, a better working relationship as far as the academic piece with our student athletes because it really keeps them on task. So, with that, that piece with the academic probation, we had two students that we kind of piloted this fall with, they would have been ineligible compared to the old policy. We piloted with these two student athletes. Both of them were not able to participate until progress reports came out in October. And when they, and as of right now, quarter one grades closed on Friday, both of them made silver honor roll. So, they all had As and Bs. So, it was a positive thing. They're on the team. They didn't miss practices. Coaches were working with them, making sure they're going to home or club, you know. So, it was a very positive thing. We're hoping that, you know, this will continue. If you flip through, I know you have the whole policy. There is a little quick reference guide. I know it's in the screen in front of you. This kind of works you right through it. I know there's a lot of language in there and I could be up here and talk to you all night about this. I know we have a lot of things on the agenda, so I don't want to do that. But this will, this reference guide as well will go into the Student Handbook so that all the students can figure it out a little bit easier, parents can look at it, and you're literally going right through. It's higher than the CIAC policy. We're holding it to a higher standard. It's also higher than, you know, the districts around us. We feel very strongly that it should be higher. CIAC says that you need to be taking, passing four classes. There's no 70 average tied to that. We feel that, you know, five, most of the students here at Plainville High School take six or seven classes. So, they're still having to pass those five, have at least five classes in their schedule. They can't just have three study halls and, you know, we're trying to make sure that they understand that the academics is huge here at Plainville High School. And then, the only other thing that'll be taken away from it is the weekly checklist. Teachers felt like that was more tedious. The students were, you know, have a lot on their plate. You're adding extra to that, trying to chase down teachers if they didn't have them on a cert, on the Friday, handing in in time. We had students ineligible because they weren't handing in a weekly checklist, even though they had As and Bs because the policy stated, you know, different. So, you know, that's the changes. I'll open up the floor to any questions. I know that, you know, you have had the time to look through it, but if you do have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No questions, just, Mr., you know, Paige brought this to us at the policy meeting and we did appreciate. And our policy meeting is made up of more than just Board Members, it's made up of community members as well. And everyone there was very appreciative of the fact that you really involved a lot of people, went out and looked to see what everybody else is doing, really tried to solve these problems in a good way. I think this is a really good revision to what we had going on. And the other thing we appreciate, and I can't remember if it was the way the policy was written, but somebody said, you know, "We always say student athlete." And the fact that we use that, and you use that terminology just now, is really important to us and was a good thing for the Policy Committee, so...
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for that. And thank you for coming this evening and explaining it to the full Board so we all are on the same page.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with what Becky said. I think this is a very positive step forward and I applaud you and the entire team that you put together to get this done. It encompassed all the aspects of academic life at Plainville High School, and I think it addresses the situation that really needed this action. And so, thank you so much for that effort.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Athletic Director Farrell, and need I say, he's doing a fantastic job as Athletic Director. I would now like to invite Rosa Perez to come to the podium. She's got two updates for us. One, with regard to our Veterans Day activities. As you know, we hold school on Veterans Day and had another very successful day on Friday that she'll explain to you, as well as our first school day, Professional Development Day, held on Election Day. And as she will explain to you, we had some really unique topics with a lot of high-quality engagement from our staff. Rosa Perez, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Good evening, newly selected Board Members in season, Board Members, Administration Team, and present Community Members. It is my pleasure to share news from the Curriculum Office. All schools throughout the district paused to honor and celebrate our veterans and active-duty military members. Student participated in assemblies, prepared artwork, shared musical performances, prepared food, and spent time as a family honoring the service and sacrifice of our veterans. All who were present were engaged and even shed few tears during readings and TAPS performance. Some students even expressed to me the desire to join the military upon graduation. The pictures before you represent some of the activities and people that were involved in the celebration. On the top row, we have Taflon students singing "America the Beautiful." At the center is the winner of the door decorating contest, Mrs. Guadorama. And I invite you to take a walk to Room 324 after the meeting to see firsthand this beautiful memorial. Next is Mrs. Olmsted and Mrs. Corviello, along servicemen in attendance at MSP celebration. Bottom row, Mrs. Logoeck with guest veteran. The next, the SEALs of all branches at MSP, all were highlighted as the audience listened to the song of each branch of the military. Lastly, the student who was in charge of removing the colors at the conclusion of MSP ceremony. I am sure some of you know who she is. The most impressive learning for me on this day was to see the table that honors all men and women who served in the armed forces. When speaking to an active Marine on Saturday, he told me that this table is always set in every dining area on base. The table is round to represent the everlasting devotion and concern for the fallen and the missing. The white cloth represents the purity of their motives when answering the call of duty. The single rose reminds us of the life and the blood that was shed. The vase with the red ribbon symbolizes the commitment to account for the missing. The slice of lemon reminds us of the bitter fate of those captured in missing and foreign land. The salt reminds us of the tears endured by those missing and their families. The black napkin is a reminder of the isolation, deprivation, and cruel fate of the missing. The Bible represents the strength gained through faith. The inverted glass for their inability to share this evening with us, and the empty tilted chair because they are not here with us. I have never experienced or seen this memorial and I was moved and touched over all this symbolism that was with this table. Okay? Now, we switch to professional development news. I am sure that you guys went around to all the schools and was able to witness all the Veterans Day celebrations. I am sure that you guys went around to all the schools and was able to witness all the Veterans Day celebrations that were amazing. For professional development, during the morning session, all faculty, tutors, and paraprofessionals attended a presentation about culturally responsive education. Our keynote speaker was Gerald Hairston from Craig, but also a graduate from Plainville High School, which I will offer more, more information in a minute. The afternoon offered menu options that included technology, accreditation work, continued conversation about standards-based grading and learning, and compliance training for CPR and PMT restraint. The most popular topic, I have to say, forty were in attendance, was keep calm and teach on. Learning about how yoga and mindfulness can keep students and adults to center themselves and concentrate on breathing for the purpose of relaxation. Simple and quick techniques were taught that can be used in any classroom. Currently, some MSP teachers are using the techniques and report that students appear calmer and relaxed after a few minutes. Now back to the morning session. During the presentation, Dr. Bromett acknowledged the work of the Culturally Responsive Task Force. This group was formed about a year and a half ago for the purpose of addressing the concern of the Strategic Planning Committee, stating that Plainville is a very diverse town, therefore, there is a need for all to learn how to become culturally competent. As you can see, this need is highlighted in our district strategic document. At the bottom under the teaching. One of the first tasks of the group was to create a definition of culturally responsive education. The task force used the National Association of Social Work Standards as a base. The definition has been shared with all faculty and staff, and we are in the process of reproducing it and posting it in every working area. As you can see, the definition affirms the need to respect all for the purpose of preserving the dignity of all human beings. Gerald's presentation concentrated on how to become culturally competent, a culturally competent individual. In order to achieve competency, one must go through a process of awareness, knowledge, sensitivity, to achieve the competent level. I have placed a copy of this document for you as there's a lot of text, so you can read it at your leisure. Reflecting about who we truly are, our beliefs, values, traditions, customs, is where we all begin. Through this reflective process, one might uncover biases that need to, to be addressed as they can possibly interfere with how we see the differences of others and if they can, and if they can potentially interfere when trying to establish relationships with others. During the course of the work with this task force, we all go in with an idea or thinking that we are all very culturally competent and we know what it is. And boy, did we discover so many different things along the way that we didn't realize until we started the work. The second half of the morning consisted of breakout sessions facilitated by task force members. We divided the faculty alphabetically in hopes to have representation from different schools within the group. One of the many activities was to watch a video called "The Race," which I would like to share with you as well.
Hey, line up, line up, everybody line up. We're about to race. Everybody line up. Shoulder to shoulder, carry out your backpacks, fast forward, line up, we're about to race. And we are, we are racing. $100 bill. The winner of this race will take this. $100 bill. Before I say go, I'm going to make a couple statements. If those statements apply to you, I want you to take two steps forward. If those statements don't apply to you, I want you to stay right where you're at. Take two steps forward if both of your parents are still married. Take two steps forward if you grew up with a father figure in the home. Take two steps forward if you had access to a private education. Take two steps forward if you had access to a free tutor growing up. Take two steps forward if you never had to worry about your cell phone being shut off. Take two steps forward if you never had to help mom or dad with the bills. Take two steps forward if it wasn't because of your athletic abilities, you don't have to pay for college. Take two steps forward if you never wondered where your next meal was going to come from. I want you guys up here in the front, just turn around and look.
After watching the video, we learned how events and circumstances beyond our control can provide advantages and disadvantages in this race called life. Sometimes nothing we have done have placed us ahead in the race, but one must never forget that we need to help all who might have had an unfair advantage to no fault of their own. This video could represent our classrooms and that, and that was the point we were trying to get across. During the breakout sessions, participants shared personal experiences that have helped define who they are today as educators. The conversations were rich and intense. We also discussed what is culture. Most people when asked what culture is, they talk about race, food, ethnic background, and some what we can see. We seldom consider other aspects of culture like our values of what is right or wrong, religious beliefs, worldview, decision-making model, respect for authority, and more. These aspects are hidden under the surface, but in order to uncover, one must invest time getting to know a person or a group in order to discover. The breakout session was also guided by discussion questions. They are not easy questions to answer, therefore, they need to be revisited as the work of the task for, force is not yet completed. We will continue, continue our discussion in a variety of formats until we achieve cultural competence as a district. Ultimately, our goal of achieving cultural competence will help our students remain engaged as we continue to build strong relationships in every classroom. November 7th, I can honestly say to you, has been one of the best professional development days I have ever attended, hosted, and participated in. The conversation was absolutely unbelievable and the breakout sessions, the conversations were so rich that all the stuff that we had planned, we were not able to finish because of the rich conversations that were happening in each classroom. And it was great. And the best part is that we get to continue. Any questions?
You know, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I was speaking to a parent a couple of weeks ago and they were upset about how much professional development are in the schools. Because for some reason when parents hear that, a lot of them think it's just a lot of nonsense, why do the teachers need that? And it's too bad more parents aren't here or maybe even watch it on television or even come to understand what the professional develop means to you, to the teachers and the administrators. Because listening to you, I think everybody needs to hear that because they think we, you know, they don't like the Every Other Wednesday and because that messes up their daycare and everybody, you know.
It's inconvenient.
Yeah, it, it is inconvenient. And this was actually a, a parent whose wife is a teacher in another town, so it was just kind of interesting to hear that. And I was trying to justify it because I've heard that in other towns, their professional development isn't what we have. So, you know, I appreciate that and I, I just wish more people could understand that and hear, hear how you talk about it.
They should come and visit us during professional development.
I, I had, I had the good fortune. And not only because it was warmer than pole standing at Tofflon. To attend, to attend the kickoff of presentation by Gerald Hairston. This was a truly inspirational moment. And it's so positive and so timely right now when you consider that Plainville is a town of just about nine square miles. And that in this town, we have more than a dozen languages that are the home language spoken in the home. We have in this small geographic territory, over twelve houses of worship, different houses of worship. There is so much in a cultural mix in Plainville that to have a school district that has the foresight to go out and focus on this in such a meaningful way and using Gerald was super. He was, he would relate to his former teachers that were in the audience. Cindy Burzel is one. It just, that just engaged every professional that was in that audience and the professionals, that's the teachers, that's the paraprofessionals, all the people that were there were focused in on what he had to say. And what he had to say was so meaningful. And this is such a step in the right direction. I just applaud all of you that were responsible for making this most significant event happen. It was just the perfect way to start the day. And the tone when I left that room of all the participants was just so positive and just going in the right direction. Thank you.
We could share the presentation, but it's really to be in a group setting and to share that brings the presentation to life.
I just want to thank Rosa for coordinating our PD days. It's a lot of work and she makes it seem effortless. It goes without a hitch. I'd also like to acknowledge Twana Graham Douglas, who's an integral member of our Culture Responsive Task Force Committee and has helped lead the charge and has done a beautiful job with that. So thank you very much.
Thanks Rosa, thanks Twana.
All right. The next item under my report is Cabe Awards. Congratulations to the board again. In your packet, you have the list of all the awards given by Cabe this year, and I'm pleased to announce that the board received honorable mention in the Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communication for our launch of our Twitter last year. And once again, I would like to acknowledge Lynn Davis for her tremendous oversight of all, all things communication in Plainville. And we will be receiving a certificate about this award later on in this school year, which I'll be thrilled to present to the board. And I've also been notified that we will receive some type of leadership award at the Cabe Conference next Friday. We'll have to stay tuned for what it is once we go there, go to the award ceremony. So congratulations to the board. And the next item on my agenda is subcommittee appointments. We, in light of our new election and board membership, we have a list in your packet of all the current membership of our subcommittees. But as you'll notice, we do have a vacancy on the finance subcommittee as Cheryl Provost was previously the chair of that committee. So we will need that spot filled. I don't know if we want to do that this evening or take that up at another time, but I do plan on trying to get a board subcommittee, finance subcommittee done sometime in very early December.
Dr. Bromett, I did speak with Kathy and she'll take Cheryl's place on the finance.
Wonderful. So Kathy Wells will be our new chair. Oh, she's going to get right in there.
If, they can vote on another chair if she's not interested in that.
Okay. Very good. So we will put her name in and take that up with the finance subcommittee at their December meeting, which has yet to be scheduled. And the last item on my report is the budget update. In your packet, you have the tentative schedule for our board budget meetings, which are quickly coming upon us. Now, I did mention tentative, there are some dates that are still to be determined, but it would be helpful if the board would review that list and let my office know if there's conflicts on these dates. But just a brief overview, we've already begun our budget overview. Mr. Adlerstein came to an administrative council meeting and gave an overview of our process. And we have asked all the administrators to prepare their budgets. Immediately following the Thanksgiving holiday, they will come and meet with Mr. Adlerstein, myself, and Mr. LaPage and discuss their requests. You know, we were very clear about how tight the budget will be this year and that if they are requesting something new, we're asking them to kind of take something back as, as a way of making that happen. And in December, the facilities committee will review the five-year capital plan. We're going to schedule, I hope to plan that board meeting or the subcommittee meeting for December 11th, before the December 11th board meeting. We also plan on holding a finance subcommittee at that point in time to officially approve this calendar. And then the superintendent's budget will be developed and refined from December 12th through the January 19th. And there are a few dates scheduled that are, you know, again, tentative. We hope to have the joint Board of Ed and Town Council meeting on January 11th at the Town Library. And so, and then we have our regular Board of Ed meeting on January 8th. So I won't go through the entire list, but those top dates are fairly firm. And again, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to Joan if you are having a clear conflict with any of those, so we have time to make a few revisions to the schedule. Does anyone have any initial questions to this preliminary schedule? And that does conclude my report for this evening.
Does anybody have any other questions for Dr. Bromett?
All right, thank you. All right, next we have our subcommittee reports. Our student representative, Nate.
Hi. Students received finalized quarter one report cards on last Friday, November 10th. Now, quarter two grades just started, so everyone's pretty much got a clean slate. Seniors are finishing up some college applications as early action deadlines are approaching. And then gold, silver, and bronze honor roll for quarter one will be, they were on report cards on Friday and will be published soon in the paper. Athletics Fall Sports Award Night is Tuesday, November 28th at 6:00 p.m. Football currently has five wins and four losses and plays Farmington on Thanksgiving. And this has been a huge improvement from last year. They won their last four games in a row. And I know just among like the student body, this whole success and turnaround of the football team has been really positive. Volleyball season ended on October 30th. The girls worked hard all year. Girl soccer finished with a record of five and 11. Boys soccer suffered a close loss, it was 2-0 last week, very close game. And then they showed a strong fight in the state tournament that they were a pretty low seed in despite playing a tough schedule. Cross country finished their season with state opens this, I want to say, this past week with many athletes performing well. And then girls swimming competes in Class S championships tomorrow at Southern Connecticut State University. Shakespeare, there's a Shakespeare play on both Friday and Saturday at 7:30. Next week, I encourage you to come out and support the junior and senior class at the Powder Buff game on Tuesday, November 21st at 6:00. I'm going to be cheerleading, I'm sure I'm going to be a little cold. Class competition is set for Wednesday, November 22nd. We're finalizing up the events and participants for that. The senior class picture is going to be taken the morning of November 22nd. After Thanksgiving break, Career Day is going to be Thursday, November 30th. Students look forward to that every year just because it allows them to really kind of set their sights bigger than Plainville High School. Go Baby Go is going to be Friday and Saturday, December 1st and 2nd during school and then at 8:00 a.m. And then there's going to be a meeting for parents and athletes that are going to be participating in winter sports on December 5th at 6:00. in winter sports on December 5th at 6:30. Then Cap and Gra, Cap, no, I lied. Just Graduation Gallon Measurements will be Thursday, December 7th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. And then that should bring us up to our next board meeting. Are there any questions? Busy time. Let's block on out.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks.
All right, next, Facilities. Mrs. Tyrell.
Facilities meeting, Facilities Committee did meet at the middle school. Mr. Bustle went over the plans for some of the energy conservation, energy savings. You know, what do we call that? It's a program of some kind that we're doing with, with the CLMP, or Eversource, or whatever they call them, sorry, the names. Still on CLMP, that's way back there. And, and also, we had a tour of the middle school. For those of us that did not get a chance to see the, the lab, it was, it's really a spectacular area down there. A lot of work was done over the summer. I know a few days before that, yeah, I think it was a few days before that, we had recognized the staff at the middle school, who did such a great come to fruition. And then we saw it, and it was, you could see that was a lot of work to be done over the summer. So, it was a good meeting.
All right, thank you. Want to do policy as well?
Policy. Policy met as well. You'll see a few first reading policies that are, are on the docket here. And, you know, for Mr. Hilburn's sake, we do look at this policy, and we will not, although I think his is a regulation.
It is, yeah.
But usually, with a policy, we won't vote on a policy the first time around. We'll put it out there for this month as a first reading, and then next month is when we would approve it. Gives us some time to kind of digest it and mow it over, so.
All right, thank you. Let's see, moving on. Do we have, Dr. Broman, you have anything on the turf?
There have been no updates on the turf committee since our last meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. White, the high school?
The high school PAC meeting was, to have been held this past week, last Wednesday, but was postponed to a yet-to-be-determined date, because they had their fundraiser at Mo's in Sudington. And so, to support that, I also did go there and have a little Mexican dinner. So, that, their next meeting is gonna be announced, hopefully, very shortly.
All right, thank you. Tofflon, Nicole?
Yep. The PTO reports that the fall fair was a big success. Teachers created a haunted attic, which raised $715, which was donated to the family of a student with severe medical needs. They finished planning their Veterans Day program. They expected 80 guests and veterans to be honored at the program. And they discussed the holiday extravaganza, which is scheduled for December 1st. The evening will include games, crafts, a DJ bake sale, book fair, photos, and a holiday green sale.
Thank you. Linden, Mrs. Hardy?
The Fall Fun Festival was a huge success. Over 300 people attended. The PTO just finished the Holiday Dips fundraiser. The PTO is helping to raise money for world-renowned author Patricia Palaco, who will be coming to Linden in the spring. Whoops, excuse me. Our annual gift shop and Snowflake Sway are coming up in December and January. Planning is already beginning, and the yearbook picture gathering is underway already.
Thank you. Middle school, Crystal?
We met on Wednesday, October 11th. We discussed, and we had a family bingo night on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, November 8th. It was a lot of fun. Mr. Guarino called all the games. It went well. They had a lot of fun. We had a good turnout, very good turnout. And families donated food for a bingo card, so we donated that to the Plainville Food Pantry. We're also selling luminary bags for $5. And these bags will light the path around the town during the tree lighting and the holiday stroll on Friday, December 8th. And we meet tomorrow night. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, Wheeler. Let's see, Wheeler had a recent pie fundraiser. They sold 368 pies for a total profit of $2,540. They also have a visiting author named Suzie Klein, who wrote all of the Horrible Harry books. I'm sorry, I don't have any small children, so I really don't know what those are, but Crystal's shaking her head, so she must know what it is. She's coming on November 17th, and she'll be signing books for all the students who purchase one. Then Wheeler received a $1,000 grant from a gentleman named Mr. Vito Giannini. He must be grandfather to two students there, Evan and Elena. He's representing the Kiwanis Club from New Britain. And that grant's gonna be used for students in grades three to five, who can opt to attend the Yard Goes game in Hartford, as part of their Positive Behavioral Support System. And lastly, Wheeler's very, Wheeler's very big on collecting their box tops, so they've collected 7,660 box tops, and this is representing about $750 for the school. And I'm sorry, they changed their schedule. I'm not sure if they have a meeting through the, I don't think the next meeting's till sometime in December, but you can always check the Wheeler website. I'm sure they have it on their calendar. All right, next, we have Crete Council. Mrs. Tyrell?
I was not able to attend the Crete Council in October, which I don't have a report.
Thank you. Under the Chair's report, I don't have anything. I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, because that's next week. All right, we'll move on to new business. Board open forum. Does anyone have anything they wish to say?
I would just like to make one other point. There's so much negative things in the news these days, that I think positive things are always good to highlight. And there is in this town, a Coalition for Positive Youth Development, that is actually headed up by Roberta Brown, who heads the youth division in town. But there's several members of the administrators of, of the schools that serve on that committee, and that does a tremendous amount of good. They're currently working on, they're programmed to promote the fact that the sale of alcohol to minors is, is against the law. And they're working with, trying to get some local service clubs to do that. But Lynn Davis, who does so many things around here, also is the sub-chair of that committee. And Macarena is also on it, and I think Steve LaPage is on that. And it just, again, shows how involved that, the professionals that are involved in Plainville Community Schools are in what is, the positive things are taking place in this town. And I think they should be lauded for that. There's so much good work being done. The program that was put on to make parents aware of what they can do to protect their children from, you know, private networks and all of that. And Kevin Ross was very instructional, along with Detective Positis, in that program that was put on by the Coalition. So, that, there are some really strong, positive things that are taking place, and it's, the nucleus is Plainville Community Schools. And I think that folks in charge of that should be really applauded for those good efforts.
Thank you, Foster. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to mention, I think, I can't remember the date. Was it Friday, October 20th, I think? Right, that, the administrators slept on the roof. Or Thursday, okay, yeah. And then, so, it was kind of fun. We came up and saw all of them up on the roof in the dark. So, it was kind of cool, and all the positive news that was out there on the news that day. And then that following morning, that Friday, it was kind of fun. I came, my son was playing in the band, so it was kind of fun to see them all in their blue shirts. And it was kind of fun that day, to see them all walking around in their blue shirts. My sister was wondering if they all got shirts that day, because they all were wearing the same shirts around town, so it was kind of fun. And their homecoming parade, too, all those floats, was really fun, and the band, and the fire truck, that was my niece's fire truck. But it was kind of fun. So, there was that. And the Veterans Day thing, I did have the opportunity to go. See, I started off at the middle school, helping as a mom, and so I got a chance to be there for most of the day. I didn't get to go to many of the other schools, but I did end up at Linden, too, and see the little kids. That's kind of fun. But I think it's a great, a great way to spend the day. You know, it brings tears to your eyes with the presentations and stuff that was going on. And I think that's it.
Thanks, Crystal. Anyone else?
Yep. I also joined Crystal at the, at the middle school Veterans Day celebration. It was really well-received. When it was over, I went to the library and spoke with some of the veterans there, and told them, asked them about the fact that there was school on Veterans Day. And, you know, I really think that people get it. More and more districts are moving in this direction. It's a lot more meaningful, having a program like this, and, and having it, having people hear, having the kids really hear from some people who have experiences, that makes, it makes it a reality to them. A couple of gentlemen that they had from, and now I can't remember where they were from, that spoke with the kids, and the kids asked questions and everything. It was really, it was really a great, a great program, and I think a learning experience for those kids. And, and the veterans also, you know, were, it was well-received by them. I also just, you know, want to thank people for coming out and voting. Unfortunately, I haven't heard the percentage, but I don't think it was much higher than, than it has been in the past. It is an unfortunate thing, and I will say what I say to people all the time, and they look at me like I'm crazy. If you vote for the President of the United States, and you don't vote for the people on the Town Council, and Board of Education, and, and all the different boards and commissions in your town, then, don't bother. I honestly want to say that, because the people in, in your local government are the people who really affect your quality of life on a day-to-day basis. Not saying anybody's more important than anybody else, it's just, it's, it's a reality that the people that really affect you are the people on the local level. And it's unfortunate that we can't get people out to vote locally. So, that's my plug there. And the Cabe Conference we have coming up this week, I know Dr. Broman alluded to it, several of us will be there. There's a presentation called, what's, oh, what's Dave Gagnard?
The Makerspace.
Makerspace, yeah.
Video designer.
Yeah, it's a video design.
Deb Pykel.
Yes. Dave Gagnard and Deb Pykel are gonna be doing there, and I think it's the worst time in a long time. At Plainville's actually done a presentation, so it's kind of cool. So, if you can catch that, I think it's A7. So, it's on the beginning of the day. And I kind of volunteered to be the moderator for that one. I figured, you know, I'm gonna be there anyway, and they want me to moderate, so, okay. So, that'll be, that'll be a good thing. And also, just to acknowledge Cheryl. I know that we, before the meeting began, we did a, we, you know, recognized Cheryl Provost for her eight years of service on the Board of Education, but I like to do it officially in the minutes. Cheryl gave a lot to, to the board, her tour of board service, and we really do appreciate everything she did. As everybody mentioned, she was passionate, passionate about the arts, and passionate about fairness, and passionate about just doing the right thing. So, we will miss her. However, the good news is that we have Ms. Kathy Wells. And Kathy is, I think, somebody who, I don't want to say she's gonna fill Cheryl's shoes, I don't want to put her in that place, but, but I know that Kathy is also a good person who has a lot of, a lot of fairness, and a lot of common sense, and it's something that is well too short in this world, so. Congratulations, Kathy, and welcome. And I think I'll shut up now.
Thanks, Becky. Anyone else? All right, moving on, we have no special ad. All right, we have three policies. We have our first reading. Mrs. LaPage, just want to just brief us on each one quickly, and then we'll make a motion. Sorry. No offense. You know, we all love you.
Well, since seven of the board members were at the policy Subcommittee meeting back on October 26th, I'll spare you excessive detail. Basically, I receive, as you know, I receive reports from Cabe with updates on public acts that have required a policy shift, so I get to read all these policy updates. Sometimes they're an inch thick, and very exciting stuff. So, from that, we, I recommend policy updates with committee. So, the ones that came to the surface this time, and we typically have three per year, the first one was related to absences and excessive absences, absences and excuses policy 5113, which, the biggest thing within this policy, and the reason for the need of a change, is that in the prior legislation, it was required that an in-school suspension of a half-day length or longer counted as an absence against your district accountability report. They removed that, so if you're in an in-school suspension, receiving your education through alternative means, they removed that requirement. So, that was one of the main reasons for changing that policy. In addition, our absence and truancy policies hadn't been updated in quite some times. They needed to be reflective of current, current policy that was recommended. So, the first two, 5113 and 5113.3, are just about that, making sure they were aligned with state law, and, and our policies reflective of that. And I use most of the Cabe-recommended policy that's been vetted, and a recommended policy. For the physical force, use of physical force policy, I know it sounds a bit extreme, policy 5144, this is really in respect to, again, this was part of the mandate relief package that came out. In the prior policy, it required that all district personnel receive training on de-escalation strategies, and, and anyone on the crisis team for each school, every school's required to have a crisis team, receives more extensive training. That, that requirement's still in place for the crisis team. You have to receive a full day of training on what's called PMT training. We typically use, it's physical, physical management training. We use an organization out of Middletown for the full-day training most of the time. However, we do have someone, Andrew Batshelder, is fully certified, and he just trained, I know, our high school administrative team, and a couple of others from the district, so we were able to do it in-house for five people. So, enough, enough really about that, other than, you know, we are in compliance with that policy. We have identified crisis teams for every school. We have a chart that lists when their training is up, and when they need recertification. So, this policy gets us in alignment with what's required, related to physical management, de-escalation of students who are very upset, and we have to report on any time a student is, is restrained in any way, or, or secluded, you know, for his, for his safety, her safety, or the safety of others, and it has to be done in the, in the proper way, and as little as possible. So, those are really those, those three policies that we addressed. I don't know if you want me to talk about the regulation now, or wait till we get to that?
No, that's in the consent agenda. I think you already kind of addressed that.
Okay.
All right. Joan, are you okay if we just do a motion for all three? Okay. Can I just get a motion for all three, please?
Motion to approve the three policies as presented.
Second the motion.
No, we don't, we don't vote. We do a write-to-the-post motion.
Motion to postpone.
Thank you. So, we need a second?
A second.
Second on that.
All right, so we have first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next, we just need a motion for the consent agenda. Anyone?
Motion for the consent agenda to be approved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, lastly, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.